Our 11th meeting of the Board of Selectmen, glad you're all here. Pursuant to Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, this meeting is being conducted via remote participation. Information on how the public can join the meeting by video or phone is available at the town website. Just a reminder, we are recording and just a reminder that the recording is not an official public document. So in, we're going to take one gender item just a bit out of order, just for efficiency of time. And then we'll call on CASA representatives. But so we'll do the appointments first so that Ethan and Dave, if they want, can get on to other things besides this. So we're thrilled that Ethan Stiles has offered to take one of the open positions as a member of the zoning board of appeals. And so I make a motion that he be appointed as a member of the zoning board of appeals, starting now and running through June 30th of this year.
I'll second the motion.
Any more discussion? So roll call vote, Ms. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo, yes.
Thank you.
Ethan, thank you so much. We're thrilled to have you aboard and we know you'll do great work and we're just thrilled.
I hope so. I look forward to it.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ethan.
Much appreciated.
Next appointment is Dave Alberti has been incredibly kind to be willing to come back on as an alternate member of the zoning board of appeals. And we're really appreciative about him doing that as well. He knows the ropes and is the, is the model of moderation and sanity. So thrilled to have him back. So I'm going to make a motion that Dave Alberti be appointed and alternate to the zoning board of appeals, starting now and running through June 30th of this year.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? A roll call vote, Ms. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo, yes. So welcome aboard, both you guys.
Thank you.
More than welcome to hang out with us this evening and you're more than welcome to go on to other things as well. So thank you so very much and we look forward to your service.
I have a question, if I may, before we sign off here. I need, I would like to have Ethan Stiles' phone number, best phone contact number, so that we may schedule the upcoming hearings and meetings we're going to put on. Is that something you could do for us?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. The best number is 781.
Oh, wait, do you want your number on the recording, Ethan?
I'll email Dave then.
Okay.
All right. 781 is pretty general.
Sorry, Chris.
All right. Yeah, I mean, we're all friends, but still, that's a good precaution. And I did have another question. We'll have to resolve it later, Liz, as far as where we want to hold this and how we want to hold the meeting and hearing.
Right.
Whether we can do it virtually or we can spread out in some fashion somewhere.
Right. It'll depend on the size of the plan sets involved. And if it's something that you can do virtual, we would prefer that you do it virtual, but.
Yeah, that's something we haven't done yet and someone's going to have to maestro that. It won't be the guy speaking to you. So if you could have that arranged, we could do it virtually. But our practice in the past, I think we did four of them over this COVID summer. And it worked well at the Denne and at the townhouse. But you know, we'll have to leave that up to the powers here to determine where we're going to go with this.
Right.
It's awkward and it's new for a lot of us, including me, as far as doing a virtual one. But I don't see it, I don't see it impossible, Liz, you know?
We can figure that out.
Okay, good. Thank you. That's, that's good.
Planning Board is planning to do their hearing Wednesday virtually. So that should test the, test the waters there with, I think they have three or four sets of plans and so on. So it should, it should all be doable. It's just people have to adapt a bit as far as how they present the plans and being able to blow them up appropriately so you can see them on the screen.
All right.
Mornings.
Okay.
Hello, excuse me. The appointment slips will be on the cabinet. I could have two signatures.
Okay.
Well, one question. Do we have to be sworn in and how do, how should we do that?
So the town clerk has been swearing people in outdoors. So the slip should be ready and signed by the end of this week. And you could contact Tricia and make arrangements to meet her at the building at a mutually convenient time. You don't even have to go inside. She'll come out and take care of that.
Okay, that works. Thank you.
Okay. Next gender item is an update from the Denne Community and School Association. This is the parent teacher organization in support of the Denne School. This is part of a newly created program where we invite in town groups and representatives from boards, commissions and committees to spend a few minutes with us, essentially updating us and just touching base. So we're thrilled. Sarah, you're with us tonight. Our intent is 10 minutes or so, just touching base. Are you letting us know what you're up to? So thrilled to have you. Welcome.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate the invite. And yeah, we were like, I wonder what they want to talk about. But I appreciate you asking us. And of course, it's a crazy year, starting the middle of last year. So we really haven't been able to do pretty much anything that was really on our usual schedule. But we are adapting as necessary and grateful that we did have some funds from a previous fundraiser sort of earmarked for part of the playground that we're sort of using because we need to. It was just sort of, wasn't necessarily for that, but that's what we had in mind. But we have a budget that we usually try to meet for yearly items. And we've probably raised a couple hundred bucks instead of thousands so far. So we just have to get creative. And in addition, a lot of the things that we normally would spend, we usually allocate $3,500 for field trip buses. And clearly that's not happening, so we don't need to use that money for there. But we've already had over $2,000 in expenditures and bless you. And have used that, what was in our account to fund that. So we're just doing what we can. We're continuing with our luncheons for our staff and faculty. And that was really important for us to be able to do. And thankfully, the community, we're just, we have such a great community. And for, we had a really nice Bon Jovi's Thanksgiving luncheon for them, which of course we couldn't do our regular Thanksgiving feast. So the community and some local businesses helped. And then going forward, we're trying to do a luncheon every month, which some basically local businesses have been funding because we don't really feel that it's inappropriate time to be doing major fundraising from families during this time. So just grateful that we have some, some funds in the bank and awesome people in the community to help us. And we have more stuff coming up that we'll be creative about figuring out how to pay for. So I don't know if you guys have any questions or what we usually budget for or any resources that you have for funds that may be more available than normal because of the time that we have going on.
I've got an unrelated question for you. We had talked about, and I'm not even sure who I was working with, about the possibility of a member of the Board of Selectmen attending a CASA meeting to come and talk to you guys about opportunities for, in the townhouse, in town government, where we were looking for volunteers. So maybe once things start to normalize again, we can kind of revisit that. So that if there's people that are interested in serving on committees, that we can kind of talk about what they do and, and maybe generate some interest.
Absolutely. We'd love to have you join us. And we are doing Zoom right now as well. And we usually have about five, you know, a small handful of people and at the meetings. And it will definitely generate interest and on our Facebook page. And we'd love to have you. The more the merrier. And hopefully, when we get back to in-person meetings, we may do add Zoom on there as well. Because we do get a few more people joining us that can't make it in person. But I would love that, Christine.
Great. Thanks, Sarah, very much.
I was really bummed out about Thanksgiving. That's my favorite. In fact, I have to show off my new. And it's nice. I like it.
It is. Yeah, they're nice sweatshirts and so.
Can you think of anything specific, Sarah, that maybe we can help you with?
I honestly can't at this time because we, we, we don't have any big expenditures that are actually happening. The field trips was kind of the big one. Scholastic news is something that we pay about $1,800 a year for, that we were able to do. And we do have some retirement gifts coming up. We had an amazing teacher, Mrs. Resmini retire last year. And another, just this break, Mrs. Reynolds, who was a teacher for many years. So we're figuring out that kind of stuff. And we did do an enrichment program recently. I also applied for the grant through the local cultural council that we usually apply for every year. And so we don't have any major things coming up because we can't really do them.
Something you might want to think about is Colleen Thompson is a grant person. And so to the extent that, you know, if you find you need information or help, maybe she could be an asset to you.
Great. And one exciting thing is we recently became a 501(c)(3).
Okay.
That's sort of been on the, you know, when I kind of came in, I'm like, okay, are we a nonprofit? And how does that all work? And we hadn't been. And it does limit some of the things we can do. So one of the community members is a CPA who had children and now grandchild in the school. And she helped us push this through and did the paperwork and filing for us. So that is great. So we have some more opportunities available there.
She sounds like somebody we ought to know.
Yeah. Yeah.
Related to the 501(c)(3), just in case someone listening to this recording is moved maybe to make a contribution, how do they go about doing that?
You could mail a contribution. I could also post on the site our new name. Well, it's about the same thing, but we just had to incorporate. But a check to CASA, we also have a Venmo now. And, but I think a check is probably best for donation purposes such as that. But still made out to CASA works. And we have been really lucky to have some businesses donate to keep us, to keep us going, doing what we're doing. And we have new letterhead with the, the 501(c)(3) number on there for people's tax purposes. So that was an exciting thing, our own little stamp.
You guys do great work and you do really tangible work. And I think the opportunity for some fundraising, even in a little town like Plumpton of somewhat modest means, I think people want to help and recognize the excellence of what goes on at the Denne. So you guys should be a fundraising machine along the way, hopefully.
Right. Yeah. But and, you know, we're, we're grateful to have such a great community and to do great things. And we're also always looking for other things in the community to be able to help out with, whether it's in the Council on Aging or providing oil, you know, or something for people that need it or projects in, in the community. So also keep us in mind for that kind of stuff.
Anything else for Sarah? We really appreciate you taking the time. We really appreciate.
Absolutely. I'm very surprised I didn't have major interruptions of children, but.
Got them locked in a closet?
I know. I stuck them in front of the TV for a little while. I'm like, well. Usually my little guy's at my feet somewhere. But, but thank you for the opportunity to come on and I appreciate it.
Yeah. Express the thanks to your committee.
I will.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Be well. Okay. Next item is a memorandum of understanding for acting police sergeant Daniel Hoffman. I think we, we all have this document concerning his hourly pay rate, step increases and paid time off. Everyone have a chance to take a look at this?
Yes.
So I'll make a motion that we sign this document.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Russo, yes. Very good. Which brings us to solar assignment amendment agreements, 180 Brook Street. So this concerns the 212, 2012 solar project pilot agreement payment in lieu of taxes. And the amendments deal with a change in ownership and tightening up some of the language in the solar agreement. As I understand it, Assistant Assessor Wendy has spent a lot of time on this and gotten legal help and the documents are ready to go.
Mr. Russo, may I speak for a moment?
Please.
Yes, I also assisted Ms. Jones with the drafting of that, that assignment agreement. So if you have any questions, feel free, you know, if you wish to ask me anything about it, I'm happy to talk about it if you need to.
So I suppose I do. You're comfortable that these documents are ready to go?
Oh, yes. We had, we had quite a, quite a bit of back and forth with, with the representatives from Borrego and Clean Capital regarding who was, who was the name of the assin, the assinors and the assinies? And how they related to the original agreement and amendments to the agreement to help us, if need be, to, to see that the, that the amount of the pilot amounts are paid, are paid in a more, a, in a more timely, in a more timely manner than they have been in the past. And to ensure that we are given notice of any future assignments of, of the controlling interest in the, in the, in the holding entity of, of the solar pilot project.
Liz, do these incorporate everything we've been talking about with Jonathan?
This is a different project, but still.
Okay.
This is an older one. And as Ethan mentioned, they had to bring everything up to date.
I see. Okay. I appreciate that.
Yeah, this is from 2012. Okay. I think I made the motion, but if I didn't, I'm, I'm going to make a motion. We, we approve these documents and sign them.
I'll second the motion.
Any more discussion? Roll call, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Russo, yes. Very good. And Ethan, glad you were here to assure us on that one.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate your work on that. These can be kind of complex. Okay. Next item is 2021 annual license renewals. And I, I've been out of town. I suspect one of these, Bree, is the vitular's license for Just Right Farm.
That's correct.
Okay, so I will recuse myself on that one.
Well, do we want to vote on that one first?
Let's steal the.
And then do all the, pardon me, Bree?
We did.
That's the only one that you have left.
Oh, perfect. Okay. All right. I'll make a motion that we approve the common vitler's license for Just Right Farm. What is it effective? It's calendar year, right, Bree?
Yes.
All right. For January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021.
And is there a second? John, you're muted.
I'm sorry. I got my, got my mute on. I second.
All right. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, well, okay. Let's go. Roll call, vote, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Mr. Russo?
I recuse myself.
Perfect. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
So let's see. Next item is Town Administrator, What Makes Plumpton Unique? I have to mention, I had my occasional WATD interview early this morning, which goes over the agenda of that evening of the Board of Selectmen. When we got to this one, I chuckled a little. And the fellow that interviews me live on the air, who's usually pretty stern and straight, started chuckling and was pretty excited about this one and how it's a little different than the stuff that usually comes across. So thrilled that it is that way. And Liz, what a great idea.
Yeah, so we kicked off the project today on the town's Facebook page. We featured the Plumpton Kindness Tree that was put together by Stephanie and Liam Tarran from Peaceful Kinds Farm. And she's really a lovely person. It's been fun getting to know her a little bit more and getting to know about her property and some of the neat things that she's doing there. But for anyone who is not certain what we're talking about here, her and her son had the idea a couple of years ago to put up a tree at the end of their driveway during the holiday season. And they put out clear ornaments, writing instruments, papers. And they encourage everyone from town to stop by and write down a sentiment or two about they love about Plumpton, or it could be about a special person that they've encountered in the town. So it's really just a positive thing. And then you write down your sentiment, put it inside the ornament and hang it on the tree. And then at the end of the season, she gave a really nice accounting of all the different sentiments, positive things about Plumpton that were noted as part of this tree. So I think that they're really excited about it. It seemed like it got quite a bit of positive feedback from the community as far as people actually stopping by and filling out these ornaments. So they plan to do it again next year. And that's just the start of this little project. We plan to feature multiple things all throughout the year on social media about things that make Plumpton unique and a great place to live and to work. So it's really just a positive project.
I think it's a great idea. John, I was happy to see you on the list of things that make Plumpton unique. So and that, there was a long list. And Sarah, maybe you could even kind of propose that. I know you have broad contacts with parents. And you know, we want to get anything, I see on Facebook, a lot of people saying, you know, I love this town. And to the extent they can come up with a one sentence, we'd love to get it out there.
Absolutely.
It's a great idea. Thank you, Liz.
Yeah, it's a great idea. Thanks.
Anything else on that? So that brings us to the review of projects and priorities list, formerly known as the parking lot. And we do this every couple of months. It's a good way for us to be reminded so stuff doesn't get lost in the day-to-day operation of town and gives us a chance to kind of prioritize both time and energy. Obviously, we can't do it all and we have great aspirations, but we have to be practical along the way. So Liz sent out the latest version earlier today, and I guess we can jump in. The first item was the fiscal year 2022 goals. I think these are the same ones as 2021. And I think they were broad enough that probably they still work. I don't know if anyone has any, anything they'd like to change on that. After that, we'll get down to the specific projects.
I'm fine.
Okay, onward. So Town Properties Committee.
Do you have a copy of these, John?
John's on mute.
I don't have the current copy.
We haven't changed anything since the last time that it was sent around. But I can send an updated one to everyone that we go through them.
Okay, so I'll just have to try and dig it up.
So we, we have the chair of that committee here. We have the selectman who is on that committee here. Either of you want to comment on what this says at this point is master plan for town campus, including examining parking areas, entrances, exits, ball fields, Harry Jason Park and a housing choice grant. And all that is in progress.
Rather than hit everyone, we, you know, I think, John, if you just gave a shot update, I mean, we, we are basically progressing with each one of these items. We're a little further along, but we're not going to accomplish them in the next year, I don't think. Maybe one or two.
No, and, and my guess is, is that we will be able to, I would hope in the next couple of months, to refine that particular item to, to, I mean, I think there's going to be a lot more work to do and we're going to need to figure out our next steps. But with, you know, with town meeting and, and all the planning coming up, we have to figure that out pretty quick as far as what our next steps are going to be. But, you know, we've done a lot of work with, with our consultant, Beta Group, to start to conceptualize, you know, how this space could be used. And they're doing some work right now in order to help validate what we can and can't do. Because just because you can fit it on a piece of paper doesn't mean it can be done, given the space that we have and the, and the facilities we have, primarily thinking about septic and water, right? It's always the things that limit us in town. So, you know, that's a whole piece of it that we're working on, as well as doing a lot of the other town properties work in trying to figure out what needs, what needs attention, what needs to be, what needs attention right now, what needs attention in a year, and trying to get things to, to a place where we can fix things that need to be fixed and then get hopefully to a point of preventative maintenance schedule. So we're not constantly chasing things, which we seem, which we seem to do and which we get distracted with periodically because something comes up and then we're, we're chasing that for, for a meeting or two. But I think overall, you know, we will, we will see in 2022 a fair amount coming out of this committee's work that will have, you know, some real tangible impacts on our buildings and properties.
I know. I'm, I'm waiting for the diagram that shows us exactly how our septic and water work. I can't imagine right now how we can go forward on some things until we know what the infrastructure is. So that's a big one for us, I think.
Yeah, I think it's, it's, that's why we sort of have this pause right now to let Beta do this work and trying to figure out what we have and where, where everything is and, and what, what state the septic for the campus is even in right now. Because that may have another, there's all this ripple effects, you know? If we, depending on what other stuff we do on the campus, we need to be able to, you know, the police station was a, was a net-net. So we didn't have any impacts to the water or, or septic there. But whatever else we do in addition on the campus is going to be net new. So now we start pushing up against those things. And, and we need to not only deal with what we have now and make sure it all works, which we know we have regular issues with that, but also make sure for the future that we, we know what those costs will be so we have, can choose and plan appropriately.
So I sit in on that committee and its previous manifestations for the last 10 years. It's a, it's a very thoughtful committee. It is slow. The whole thing is grist for everyone's patience practice. But we are making progress and something really nice is going to come out of this. So I think what we'll do on this, I'll just go down the list and read off all these things. And then the champion or the person most involved will just give a brief update on where things are at or if anything's changed. So next is, and I'll just say, we're really appreciative for the work of the committee and particularly the chair, John Wilhamsen. So next thing is consideration of technology at all town-owned buildings. Chief Clancy in Town and Men, anything you want to say at this point, Liz, about that one?
We're still plugging along with that. We had a minor setback with where some of the wiring is located within the town's library. So we're trying to work through that and come up with a low-cost solution. But otherwise, we're still plugging along. Ideally, we'll be able to have a meeting as soon as next week or the week after with some of the different town offices and talk to people about the proposed new phone system and how that might work. So progress is kind of slow and steady. So progress is kind of slow and steady on that.
Okay, next is Highway Department, Highway Barn Roof and Insulation.
That is well underway as far as the contract documents. Rob and I had a meeting with the selected contractor earlier today and they're getting ready to place an order for materials. We got the final piece of paperwork sent in today that, that we were waiting on. So now we're able to issue formal notice to proceed tomorrow.
Okay, Highway Barn Roof, or we got that. I want to add a couple of things on Highway. We, we have the signs up for the safety zones. We won't be able to do the painting until the spring, but I am looking forward to working with Rob. The more I look around towns, that the painting that's done on the roads to bring attention to stop signs and safety zones, there's a lot of creative stuff to do there. I am also, that probably have to wait until spring when the weather's warm enough. I also have talked to Rob and do, when there's time, want to work with him a little more on whether any truck, heavy truck limitation in the smaller roads is possible. And then a third project, I've noticed in certain towns, a good example is the Kingston side of Bay Road, where when they paint the edges of the road, they move the whole thing over so that one side becomes a four or five foot pedestrian bike path. Simple to do, does not cost one penny more. And I want to explore that a little bit more with Rob. That'll probably be maybe after the winter and snow season and all of that. But those are projects that I want to keep working on. Okay, Fire Department. Liz, do you want to comment on any of these?
I can, I mean, the, this, this has been, this has been pulled into regular topics that we go through at Town Properties. We probably can remove the consideration of municipal garage. That was on there from, well, last year at this time. And, and I think that there's definitely space constraint challenges that we're going to have to address in some way, shape or form in the short and medium term. But I think we're, we're trying to figure out what the best way to, to do that is going forward. But my guess is, is that this is going to be part of what our next steps are going to be with the master plan, that we're going to have to sort of really look at all of these things and sort of holistically and with various solutions that come out over that, that, you know, that we can implement over time in order to, to address issues and, and keep things moving as we get to sort of the end goal.
So Mark, just if that makes it easier, and I can reformat the list before it goes out updated tomorrow, but all of these items here are under the Town Properties Committee umbrella. And then on page two, it talks about other departments. So there's more like Highway and things like that. So I've been updating as, as we've been going. But if it's helpful, the next few all pertain to Town Properties Committee.
Okay, so maybe we can group those together for a sentence or so from John on each one.
I can just run through these pretty quick.
Go for it.
So, you know, library, the, the most pressing issue is the lighting issue. We have a solution for that, a pretty low cost solution and actually replacing the innards of the fixtures there. We're moving ahead with that since it's low cost and hopefully that will at least be a short term fix for the library's issue. We may still want to at some point to get a appropriate lighting consultant to, to look at that room and, and offer us a better plan. But no light, having light is positive, so we're going to go with that and, and move on and call, get, get a win where we can get one. We are planning to do a roof assessment for the library, similar to what we're, what, what we're doing for the townhouse. It's part of our overall plan for the buildings on the campus to be able to get that done. But that we would, that would be something we have to go to town meeting to get the funds for and do it in the summer. Town Green, the flagpole is something we're also planning to go to town meeting for funding after some back and forth and finding out that, the, how tall the flagpole actually is and how expensive it is to replace it with, you know, a fiberglass one. We were able to find, finally find a contractor who's willing to, to repair and paint it. And that will be a pretty short moment to get that functional again and looking much better. We're also looping in with that the flagpole up at 106.
Thank you, John.
And also on the town green, which we don't have listed here, we have an issue. The cistern is kind of broken since it doesn't hold any water anymore. So that's something that, yeah, not really useful. So that is something that, that is also on the radar screen, looking to deal with. Back to the townhouse, you know, we did, I did mention, we're looking to do an assessment of the roof. And yes, while we do know we have water and drainage problems, particularly for the front part of the townhouse, we figured we'd better first stop water from coming in from above. So that's going to be sort of the focus and hopefully we'll be able to get that assessment done ahead of town meeting. And we may have to show up at a meeting to at least start to remediate the issues that we've had perpetually now with the townhouse roof. I think we've, we've done roofing things there for the entire time I've been in town. The goal here is to come up with a final plan, appropriate specs of what we would need to do in order to properly fix these roofs and get them, get them functioning. The drainage piece, we actually, when we had Beta Consultant out for the, we had them out to look at how to do the ramp. They actually made some rather low, low cost suggestions that we may try and implement in the spring, really just kicking out the gutters and trying to make sure that they're not dumping water next to the building. And we'll be interested to see what that does. And then at some point, we will need to do some assessment of water infiltration on the basement level of the old, old part of the building in order to get that area. We got to stop the water from filling up down there before we can even consider what to do with that space. So that's on, on the list too. And then we had here lift installation. We've moved away from the concept of a lift and we're going down the path of doing a ramp along the side of the building. We did have some communication from Beta. They've been working on designs on that. And hopefully we'll get them to our next meeting and start being able to take a look at a couple of design options, get that priced up and out to bid. That's the goal there.
Thank you, John. Okay, Emergency Management, that's probably you, Liz.
So the Hazard Mitigation Planning Grant is still in progress. Project meeting is early February. And at the end of that process, we will have a standalone hazard mitigation plan. In prior years, Plimpton always had a few pages within the regional plan, which was very good. But this will give us a standalone plan plus a plan that we can send to Old Colony Planning Council for implementation into a larger plan update that they'll be preparing for the region. And that was funded through grant money. And the COVID-19 response is ongoing.
All right. And now we're back to Highway Department. We've talked about the roof. I mentioned the three mini projects I'm working on. And then we have implementation of a pavement management plan with a consultant.
So they already have the plan on file, but I believe it's coming time for Rob to sit down with the consultant again and just make sure that nothing would change in their recommendations. That's kind of the little roadmap, if you will, for which roads get paved or get treatment in which order. So I think it would be a good thing for him to sit down with them and make sure that everything still aligns and that no updates need to be made.
Is that on the web, Liz?
That I'm not sure about. That was done under Scott Ripley's Highway Superintendent. I think I have a hard copy of it in my office, but I could look to see if we have that available electronically.
Well, I don't think it makes sense to put it up until it's been reviewed like you suggested with Rob. But my, my idea was that it would be much like property cards where a resident could dial in and see the pecking order of streets that were going to be done over the next year. And then they would have the opportunity to comment. I don't know if that's part of the process, but I, I think it ought to be at least discussed. And if it's, you know, if it's going to be a big problem, a lot of money, then we can reevaluate it.
Okay, and then develop clear procedures for chipping removal of cut trees. Did we end up, do I remember we actually had a document that, at least we started, I think?
I don't think we ever got quite that far. In a nutshell, Rob feels very strongly that we should not be going on to private property to remove, brush, or chip. So he was going to put something together on Highway Department letterhead and get it over to us for review. And that has not happened yet, but I can send him something tomorrow and just find out that status.
With storm season upon us, it would be really good because we keep tripping over this over and over again. Be good to have that up and maybe have it up on the webs, on the town website.
You ought to run it by Colleen Thompson because this is a constant irritation with the council on aging. The people are constantly coming in saying, you know, do, are you going to do my chipping? Are you going to move it, the logs? So I think we, we need to be very clear about what our role is in that.
I agree.
Good. Okay, we're up to financial. Financial team refinement of the budget process, including forecasting for, in preparation for 2022.
So budget process is well underway. Finance Committee is looking at the capital plan. And I think it's, it's actually good timing that they didn't make a lot of headway with that last year because I think that the good work that the Town Properties Committee is doing is really going to factor in heavily to what that capital plan looks like for the next five years. So it's almost better timing that we're taking this up now as opposed to maybe last year before that committee got underway. So that's in progress.
Does it make sense for them to put a draft out that the Town Properties Committee could then evaluate? Or does it, should it go through Town Properties to the Finance Committee?
I think, so the last time I sat down with FinCom and we looked through the capital plan was right before COVID struck. I want to, it was February of last year. And we went through and a majority of the stuff on the original plan had either been completed or was kind of a moot point because we had done something different in its place. So I'm wondering if it would be easier for Town Properties Committee to send their recommendations to FinCom, kind of what the projects are that are on, on that committee's radar and sort of the timeline for them, like short, medium, longer term projects. And then Finance could certainly put it into the plan. I also believe at some point there is going to be a liaison from FinCom who actually participates in some of the Town Properties Committee meetings. So I think that that process will come together kind of organically. But it might require a little bit of kind of nudging it along.
Yeah. I think maybe, John, I could just talk about how we approach that from the Town Properties Committee side. See it much more than the Excel spreadsheet, which is all we had with the capital plan to begin with.
Right.
You know, and just fill in what we see and then send it over and then work, maybe have a meeting between all of us.
Yeah, and it'd probably be good to also, I haven't seen the capital plan in any recent time. So if, it would be good to take a look at that and see if there's anything on there that isn't on our radar screen.
Yeah, good idea.
Okay.
I'll talk about the strategy for financial reporting because we talked about having a committee put together. And I think we've sort of decided to hold off with the budget preparation going on and just the fact that COVID is making everything so difficult. So I think that's a to-do.
It's definitely a to-do. And I'm wondering if we could kind of combine the strategy with the financial reporting with the surveying, some different software options. I think with different software options or realizing the full potential with the software that we have, we would be better equipped to have more robust reporting. So that's just a thought there too. But I didn't know, do you want anybody from the financial end to continue looking into software options? Or would it be helpful at some point to get almost like a tutorial from the company that we currently utilize? Because they do offer way more options than I think what anybody would be aware of on the surface. A lot of communities do use them.
I, I think we need the committee of either five or seven people. My preference would be five, but whatever you guys agree on. And it ought to include, it's obviously going to include the accountant. Yourself, Liz, I would be, you know, I guess I'm the financial liaison. But we need one or two people from the town with financial backgrounds. Could be somebody from the Finance Committee, could be somebody. Sarah, you mentioned somebody that you had that was a CPA. I don't know, maybe this, somebody like that would be willing to help us. But I don't see approaching the software until we have a committee that sort of agrees on where we want to go. And quite frankly, we've, we've had some resistance from people inside who want to just stay where we are. So I think we need to really do a good job when we finally do this.
I, I wonder on this one, if the possibility or the consideration of a town meeting warrant article for some money for a consultant as well. You know, a fair number of committees that we end up spinning our wheels, little tiny town, talented people, but no particular expertise. And we might be able to move this process along a lot faster.
You know, Mark, I pulled together a technology committee and it turned out we weren't ready for it. So it just evolved. And I think until we get a finance committee who sits down, much like Town Properties, and says, here's where we want to go, and then addresses the things that Liz has brought up. Like, do we stay, do we work with the people who we have now? Or do we broaden the search? And there, I would definitely say we need a consultant. But I know the auditors have kind of implied that we ought to get on with it, to your point. You know, each time they come in with a management report, why are you still using a DOS-based system?
Which is part of the reason to suggest this because I, I think it would be easy for the committee to get together, maybe see some consulting expertise as needed, and then we're another year down the road. You know, we have kind of the same problem with Town Properties. And we've certainly discussed, hopefully, some funding for consultants. I just throw it out there. I mean,
Well, who's going to make the decision though if there's no committee, basically? I mean, if we just go out and hire a consultant?
No, 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 no. This would be done in, 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 in combination. I mean, I, I, I hope a committee is going to be put together and I hope that at this year's town meeting, there's some funding for a consultant. If it turned out it wasn't necessary, then we wouldn't spend the money.
Liz, when does Barbara retire?
I believe her contract goes through the end of the calendar year 22.
Okay. Okay.
So a little less than two years.
Okay. All right. I like what you're proposing, Mark, with having a consultant just to kind of assist the committee that John's going to put together, to make sure we get this done and do it right. I don't think it'd be a lot of money that we would need to bring somebody in just to look at this one project. And it might just help streamline the efforts of the town officials to make this happen in time to get this, get up and, and train them, whatever we do before Barbara leaves.
Well, I guess that one of the questions is, is what you think this software survey is addressing? Originally, it was addressing whether we should even be moving to a new software platform, not just the reporting. And that's a much bigger issue than just doing, putting a, a front end on top of what we've got. So if we need, maybe we should just have a meeting and talk through this and see if we can come to some clarity and have the accountant obviously involved.
To be continued.
Yeah, sounds like a good plan. Yeah, sounds like a good plan.
Okay, I think we're up to Fire Department. Is there someone here that knows something about street number signs?
Yeah, that's me. I had an agreement with the fire chief that we would put street number signs on where the town buildings are. And quite frankly, he is so, he's got so much going on, I've just, you know. When COVID's over, we'll do it.
John, I'm seeing a lot more signs up, so what you're doing is working. So, you know, your efforts with the, the Fire Department are excellent.
Thank you to John Schuester and the Council on Aging, because John got us a grant. Fire chief said, I'll pay for whatever signs, even if it goes over the grant. And so we got 24 through the Council on Aging newsletter. And we'll keep pushing.
Okay, we're up to, or Plimpton Hurst, I guess.
This is one of those that we're going to have to address. And we mentioned it briefly at Town Properties, and then we have no place to put this. So it's sitting over on Center Street right now and probably not the best location. So it is something I'm going to have to, have to figure out. And this is when we were talking about a municipal garage, that was kind of a logical place. But we just, there's too much going on right at the moment to address it. So it's, it's on the list and we'll have to talk about it after we get through whatever we need to do for town meeting.
We need a volunteer with a big barn.
You, you need, you need a big barn that's climate controlled is what you really need. You know, because just having the space, if it's damp or it's, you know, just, you know, a dirt floor, you're going to get a lot of, lot of challenges with that. But it's, so, you know, we're. Clock's ticking, but we're just going to have to let it tick for a little bit longer, I think, till we can figure out what the next step is for that.
Okay, Natural and Recreational Resources, first thing is the MVP Action Grant, and that's in progress. A bunch of representatives of various committees met maybe a couple of weeks ago with Bill Napolitano, who's sort of camp, captaining this, great guy, really talented, knows his stuff, and things are moving forward. Town owned land disposition process. That is an annual thing. I actually don't remember when the town treasurer last dealt with that. Do you remember, Liz?
We can look, it used to be something that I believe was done in the fall. I'm not sure if we did not do that this year with COVID. As much as I do know, though, there have not been any requests recently for somebody to purchase town-owned land. That seemed like quite a bit of kind of what was driving that process before was that we were getting certain requests on different pieces of land. That's something we could get going again, if that's.
I think the Town Properties Committee would like to see at least an updated list, so we know what we've got to work with.
And then I, and then I think, not that we need anything else to do, but I do think that as we, whatever process we go through, we probably need to have it, at least Town Properties needs to be aware of what's going on in case we've been looking at something and then all of a sudden, some other part says, oh, let's just get rid of this. And that's all of a sudden land we were hoping to utilize for something or looking to try and figure out how to put something together. I mean, we're not, we're not there yet, but we just need to, I think, keep that in as part of the, part of the mechanism.
I agree.
Process that we established listed out certain boards and committees. And that was simply an internal process that the selectmen had put together. So we can certainly add Town Properties to that distribution list and weigh in for comments and everything.
So Water Resources Working Group, I don't think it's been active right now. It does bring up a subject that would be another bullet point for this category. It has been on my mind, the possibility, if finances were to allow this year, of a town meeting warrant article seeking some funds for a hydrologist to do two things. One, to evaluate the impact of Rocky Harvest on town water in general. And two, to take a look at DEP reporting and compliance from Rocky Harvest. This wouldn't be a lot of money. There is a really good guy around who's done some work for us in the past. So I hope that that's something, if we feel like there's room in the budget, a few thousand dollars for that consultant and maybe kind of put those two issues to rest. All right, next is Soul Homestead. And as I understand it, our special legislation is before the legislature and hopefully moving along as quickly as they move along, or as slowly as they move along as the case may be. Solar agreements. Anything you want to update there, Liz?
So similar to what you signed tonight for that property on Brook Street, there are going to be people coming down the pipeline that are very similar. These are older longstanding agreements in which the town was never updated when the assignments. So Wendy's been doing a lot of good work on that with some external legal assistance as far as kind of getting a handle on all of those projects and who the current owners are. And she's working on getting everything up to date. So I expect you to see more on those. And then obviously, we have a few pending projects, impending negotiations that'll be coming up in the next little bit.
So I think we're up to volunteerism and general government.
Well, we got senior citizens first, Mike.
I'm sorry, I, yeah, I, there it is. So Plimpton Senior Citizen Issues.
I think the fact that Colleen Thompson now is our Director of Elder Affairs is just going to move this along very quickly. Though I was a little surprised, maybe Liz, you can help me with why Jean can't help us with the council?
Her, her boss essentially, Citizens for Citizens, the organization that pays her, feels like it's just way too risky for any of their people to be out in these communities working, given the current COVID numbers. They have graciously agreed to compensate these individuals for their normal working hours, but she is not allowed to access the townhouse. They don't want her taking on any undue exposure risk at the present time. I'm sure that they, especially where they are compensating all of their people, that they will reevaluate this in the near future. But it's just given what's going on really everywhere right now. They just.
I'm sorry to hear that because this is going to put great pressure on Colleen Thompson. Because she's, the notice I heard today was she's going to do the pantry. And that's a, you know, all these things are going to add up if it all goes on her shoulders. I don't have an answer, I'm just raising the issue.
Anything else on senior citizens?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
The pantry, does that mean physical people helping in distributing?
It does. So we've had to scale it back quite a bit just in recent weeks because of COVID. What was happening before was people would come to the townhouse. They'd go through the standard protocols, get their temperature checked and everything. And then they would actually go into the little pantry area with a bag, bags or a box, and pick out all the food items or supplies that they might want. Now with this latest kind of wave of COVID, we have set hours for the pantry. And what John Trainer was referring to is we had a volunteer who was working with us. She was actually paid through Citizens for Citizens. And she would come into the building two days a week and manage the pantry for us, basically. Now she's going to be unable to do that for the foreseeable future because her organization has made the determination that they don't want her doing that. So right now, we have, our Council on Aging Director has agreed to run the pantry on Thursdays from 10:00 to noon going forward. And we don't allow people into the building anymore. So whoever's doing the pantry is kind of safe inside. And they would just bring the stuff out, or somebody from the Fire Department will bring the stuff out. If you knew of anybody who wanted to volunteer on Mondays to keep the pantry going on that day, I think that would be met with a lot of enthusiasm. Because as it stands right now for this week, we're going to have to cut it back to one day.
So Monday, what's the hours?
We could be flexible with the hours, but we don't want it to be an all-day thing because we do have to make sure that someone from the Fire Department is on staff to like check temperatures and do all that for contact tracing. The original hours were 9:30 to 12:30 on Mondays. But if it had to be less than that, and John, you can step in if I'm wrong, but I think we would take anything we could get as far as, even if it was.
The person's not going to come into the building, so there doesn't have to be a temperature. What the, as Colleen says, she's going to pick, they're going to come in. Now, I don't know whether we do this by email or by phone or by person, but they come in and say, here's a list of what I'd like. Colleen will pick what we have, box it up and bring it out. I assume they can get out of the car and.
Right.
Pick it up. So I don't think there's going to be a lot of contact, but it would help to have some, to be able to offer Colleen some sort of help.
Sure, perfect. I, I have an 18-year-old son who may be able to fill that Monday slot. He's not, they, he's off on Monday, Tuesday, and he really only has to log in and doesn't have any classes, really. So I may be able to fill that slot with it, with him, or we'll figure it out. But for this coming Monday, consider it done and I'll get somebody there and I'll contact Colleen.
Yeah, if you could, maybe Liz, you can help with that.
Yep. You in touch with Colleen direct.
Yeah, and we'll get Monday covered somehow, so that will be outside.
This is what makes Plimpton unique.
Thank you.
Okay. Screen off a little because I'm just throwing some food together, but I'm still listening.
All right, anything else on senior citizens before we move on to technology?
I don't think so.
Technology it is, fiber optic upgrade.
All of the technology items are in progress. That was what I referred to earlier that Chief Clancy is working on. We expect to be able to update some of the different offices within the town government structure at some point in the next week or two with what's happening for a new phone system and some of those other items.
Thank you. So now we're up to volunteerism and general government. Volunteer recognition outreach. I, I actually have been in contact with Susan Ossoff, and we've been talking actually over months. But finally, I think we're at the place where there would be time to put together a survey and a mailing to everyone in town, kind of bringing to their attention volunteer opportunities. Hopefully then bringing to our attention certain talents or availability. So if major other challenges don't arise, I, I hope maybe we can get that going in the next, in the next few weeks. And then develop affordable age-qualified housing. Anyone have anything on that one? It's a hard one.
Still working on that one, Mark. Yeah, there, we'll be meeting with Habitat for Humanity, I believe, later this month. And work in progress.
It's another one that's grist for everyone's patience practice. Senior housing, qualified housing is a challenge.
And we certainly have spent a decent amount of time at Town Properties talking about that. There is, that is still part of the evaluation. But I do think one thing that has come out of that, and it's just something for us in our, as we're exercising our patience, is that, you know, one of the, one of the, in, in talking with a number of the people that we did from a Town Properties perspective, you know, one, probably the best opportunity we would have would be to find, you know, find space that borders town where we could tap into, to some of the, some of the infrastructure. Because that allows, that allows much greater opportunity to either do a public-private type of development, or even if you do a public type of development whereby we know we have some fixed costs instead of wildly ranging costs and trying to be able to deal with water that we might need or, and then sprinklers and, and septic and all of that sort of thing. So I think that's just one of those things to just keep, keep in mind as, as opportunities present themselves. That in, for, that, that would be the easiest and most economical way. You know, Liz had reached out and spoke to Town Administrator Berlin, I believe, right?
Yes.
And that's exactly how they have done it. And they're a pretty comparable little town to ours. Of course, they sit right next to Marlboro and some of the other bigger towns there. And that is how they have been able to leverage and increase sort of the housing that they've been doing is being able to cite that so that they can take advantage of, of infrastructure. So.
All right. Next, next one's on the list, actually, I think probably go together as a group. And they actually sort of look to me like, most of them may be things that a parking lot is for that with COVID and everything else, we haven't got to, at some point might get back to. But we have flags from the center of town to the old townhouse, flag and decoration policy, internship, cemetery cleanup, cemetery sign, cemetery signage and educational opportunities for volunteers. Good that we have them on the list. Anyone have anything in any of those in particular that'd like to comment on?
Well, the flags from central townhouse, I'd still like to see us do that. I think it just needs a warrant article or some money from the budget. I don't know where, I think it was counted 17 flags. I think we'd do it. And I think Christine, you mentioned, we, some of those probably should be Debra Sampson. And then some US flags. I think it would be well received by the town, but we just got to move ahead and say, are we going to, are we in agreement? Should we do it?
Do we have an idea of what we might need in terms of funds to do it?
No, but I think Liz and I could quickly figure that out. Liz, I think you actually had taken a quick look, so we can just revisit it.
Sure.
All right, things to follow for the long term, Carver Urban Renewal Project. Anything happen there that we know about?
Not since I updated the board. Gosh, that must have been a couple of months ago now. They had a meeting in Carver and they invited me to participate in that. So I had listened to on their meeting, but since then, nothing new that I'm aware of.
It's just basically on hold, Liz, or?
No, it sounded like they were moving forward back at that time. Actually, some intersection improvements, not just at like the top part of Montello and 58, but also at the other part of Montello. It sounded like the configuration had changed somewhat and like they were going to put in an extra traffic signal.
Okay, good.
I'm happy to resurrect that information and we send it out just to kind of refresh everyone's memory. And I can also check in with Carver and just find out if anything new has happened over the last month and a half or so.
Yeah, that would be great, Liz. I think that they moved the intersection onto land that was owned by Webby. So it was further down from Montello, which was definitely beneficial. But yeah, would be good to know when they're going to be starting the roadwork so that we can advise residents.
Yeah, because it's, I know when I showed Rob, I want to say one of the schematics, he was kind of surprised by it. I think everybody had been picturing that main intersection and it's actually the other part.
Right.
Further down that they're going to be doing that new signal. So it'll definitely take some getting used.
Great.
All right, so Rocky Harvest Settlement Compliance, part of that might be a, some money for a hydrologist and put some of those things to rest. I guess we'll see how the budget process goes. Future exploration of shared services opportunities, I think maybe that's a post-COVID thing. And then grants, we do have Colleen Thompson. And then grants, we do have Colleen Thompson working on those on all levels. Any comments on grants?
Mark, can I go back to shared services? This is kind of, I don't know if we've ever done this with some of our neighboring communities that have infrastructure, is possibly partnering on some affordable senior housing with a neighboring community.
I, I think that makes huge sense, and at the same time, an already complex issue becomes even more complex.
True.
When we, you know, try to deal with two towns as, as we've had a bit of experience in the past. But I agree with you that I, I, that makes complete sense. And I think hopefully as time frees up, worth exploring for sure.
Okay.
Okay, believe it or not, that gets to the end of the priorities list. And it probably brings us to Town Admin Update. I think probably that has been embedded in the discussion so far, but Liz, you may have other things you'd like to mention.
So most of my update has already been covered. We do have Art Moran on the line, and I think he wanted to say a few words as far as a COVID nineteen update was concerned. So I will turn it over to Art, if that's okay.
Please.
Hello?
Hi, Art.
Okay, you can hear me, okay. Good evening. I just wanted to, I, I know I've talked with a number of you today, and I'm gonna bring you up to date on, on some numbers. The numbers that we will supply, that we have been supplying Liz with are from Maven. Now, that's the official Department of Public Health program for infectious diseases. That, that's what, they're all listed. And in the month of December from Maven, we had eleven positive cases in this town. Now, that's, that's the most we've had since the beginning of this pandemic. And the spike is continuing. Up through yesterday, we had two, four, five, six, we had seven. We had another official Maven case reported today, which would bring us to eight. And then we also found out about two more cases today, which are not in Maven. So that brings us to ten, and we're only at the eleventh of January. So it's, it's not going in the right direction. You will see numbers on the state dashboard, and quite honestly, I've been wrestling with the numbers. I've talked to Chief Silver about it. There's, there's two sets of numbers. They give a positivity rate of the actual cases in Plimpton, and I have been disagreeing with that number because I'm just working with the ones out of Maven. That, that's it. The other set of numbers, which we're at seven point, oh, maybe eight-three, or around seven and three-quarters percent. And that's the, the testing rate. That's how many people test positive out of that group. So it's a different set of metrics. Who actually has it as it's reported in Maven? And the testing, the testing can, can show, is useful when you try to show a trend. Okay, which way is this thing trending? Actually, in the last couple of days, we've trended down a little bit. But that's because, I'll give you an example, last week, there were six people in town, my wife and I being two of them, who tested negative because we had a possible exposure. So that's gonna skew that, I mean, thank goodness, we all did test negative. But the numbers that Liz puts up will be the actual positive cases in Maven. And I've asked the fire department, since they are now doing our, our Maven tracking, to give the Board of Health a report at the end of each month as to the number of possible cases. I have gone back to old school, and I have a calendar in front of me, and I write a one, or a two, or a three in each block, and I simply add them up because it's foolproof. So we don't have any word on a vaccine as yet, when it might arrive in, in Plimpton. I'm told that the fire department will have it probably first, even before our primary care physicians get it, which they should have it to do the frontline, first-line responders. But again, there's no word on that. I, I talk with the chief on a regular basis about numerous things and, and COVID-related, and he hasn't, doesn't have word yet on it. So I will leave you with that. If anyone has any questions, please ask. I'll do my best to, to give you an enlightened answer.
Um, I, I just wanted to connect with you again as far as the numbers go. So what we had been reporting on social media and on the town's Facebook page was that second metric that you had mentioned, like the number of people who actually tested positive within that time span. And those numbers we were taking directly from the state's COVID reporting dashboard. But I understand what you're saying, that those are gonna differ a little bit from Maven because they're looking at a certain pool of people and then deriving those percentages and everything from that. I think it's an important point of clarification, and I'm wondering if, when we do our weekly update next week, if we should clarify, kind of like you explained it, just that those numbers that we had been reporting was the actual number of positive tests. I don't know what your thoughts.
Yeah, I, I would concur. I, I know that Charlie up in Halifax reports, and I don't know the numbers, where he gets his numbers. I'm sure he's getting them from the Board of Health. But I would assume that he's using Maven numbers, not this, the, the the testing positive rate. I, I would hope that he is because, I mean, you can have, it, it's a whole different metric. And, and, you know, one is a trending, but the positive testing, that's a, that's a trend. I like to, to communicate hard numbers with people. These are the hard numbers we have in town. Now, we do know of, like I say, these last two, we got late this afternoon, they're not in Maven yet, and, and that was specified, that, that was made clear to us, that they're not there yet. Now, the state does have somewhat of a delay at times getting things into Maven. I'm not sure how long the delay is. We, we haven't been able to ascertain any of that, that they're just far too busy for other things. They've got people, you know, getting the, the data together. But we will provide the best numbers that we can back up, which are the numbers from Maven. And, and that's, that's, they're in the state system, we know those numbers are correct. Any other numbers, well, you could make a case maybe one way or the other, but I'd rather use hard numbers than when they're reported, which they all have to be. We'll, we'll have something that we can, we can back up, there's documentation for those numbers. Not just a percentage that could swing on a daily basis or every couple of days, and it can swing wildly, too. So we, that's why we're providing what we're providing to, to you, Liz, and, and then you can pass that along to the town. But they're, they're, they're actual hard numbers, and they're real numbers.
That sounds good, thank you, Art. So what I'll do, just so we don't confuse people, because we had been posting, the last two were that other metric. I'll leave that alone, because that's what's showing up on the state website. And then next week, when we do the posting, I'll coordinate with you and the fire chief, and you can give me all those current Maven numbers, and then we'll explain the metric that's being used and get those posted so that people can, can see those numbers.
Yes.
Going forward.
And they'll be posted weekly?
Yes.
And just to let you know, Liz, I had a conversation with Kathy again today, and you will be updated in real time with another positive case or two more, more positive case via text message. And so you may get, I hope you don't, but you may get numerous text messages a day saying another positive case, another positive case. But we, we're tracking it, but I want you to be aware on a, on a real-time basis of what's going on.
I appreciate that, thanks, Art.
Anything else, Art?
No, no, does anybody have any questions?
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
We're on to, we're on to correspondence. Anything, Liz?
I don't have anything in correspondence, no.
All right, so our next meeting is in two weeks.
Did you want to update real quick about the schools?
Sure.
So we're, we can, we reopened after Christmas break, same as the way that we were. And the numbers are, of course, climbing there as well. If you look at it to the week of Thanksgiving, you know, we had twenty-eight cases in the school community across the four, across the three towns, all the schools. We have a hundred and nine as of today. So we had twenty-eight last week alone. Denit has been very fortunate so far, and we've only had a handful of, of cases. But, you know, if the numbers keep climbing everywhere else, they're gonna catch up there, too. And so pretty much we get an update daily from the administration with additional cases across any number of the, of the schools. We're gonna continue to follow all the protocols and keep the, keep the classrooms open as, as long as we can. And working closely, I know the administration's working closely with the state and with the state epidemiologists to make sure that we're making the right decisions as best we can for that.
Yeah, and that's good, John. The, the thing that, and I don't mean to downplay the other schools, but my concern, being the Plimpton Board of, a member of the Plimpton Board of Health, is the Denit School. And I look at the, at the cases there, and I'm, I hate to say it, but I'm, I'm, I, I feel positive about it, and is it the things that we're doing? Yeah, I think that helps. Unfortunately, I don't think the spike is coming from the lows or the market baskets or shaws or the restaurants. The spike is coming from people who got together during the holidays, unfortunately, with their family members, and that's how it's spreading. That, that's the fastest way to do it, is small, is groups in small spaces. So I think, you know, the Denit, actually, I had a chance to talk with the club, the Upland Club, and I was very encouraged with all the steps that they've taken. They're, they're following protocol, I think, to a T. That's good. But you just can't keep it out, you can only do so much in your own facility. It's people from outside that will bring it in. And then, you know, hopefully our, our little community, we, we socially distance over the, the holidays. And, and, you know, as tough it is, as it is for, I don't, being a grandparent, you got your little one saying, you know, Ma, why don't you come over like you used to? You know, and that hurts. So, but we, we, we do the socially distancing thing, and if everybody does, we'll, we'll beat this thing.
Thanks, everybody. So our next meeting's in two weeks. Any board, commission, committee, or group, anyone would like to consider inviting?
We have, we already have Habitat coming in.
Oh, great, wonderful.
Yeah, so they're lined up for them.
We also were gonna invite Paze, I don't know if we actually put a date on that.
We also are gonna be starting a little later next time, because we have an executive session first.
So why don't we save Paze for the meeting after that? That'd be all right?
Sure.
Okay. So we're up to.
Bree, you'll, you'll send them.
Is Habitat coming in two weeks?
Yes.
And would you invite Amy two weeks after that?
Yes, what's a guess? Okay, is she in a month?
Yeah, that'd be four weeks from today, I think. Okay, we're up to the minutes for January twenty-first. Everybody have a chance to take a look at those?
I, I had one or two things. Under wage and personnel on the first page, right at the end, it talks about a proposed bylaw.
Yeah.
That would apply to newly hired or promoted employees. I think the proba-, I think I, at the time, I made a comment that the proba-, probationary period was not necessarily for people who, who had long ten- tenure in the, in the town. So I just think we need to hedge a little there.
So what would you like it to say?
We were gonna make it so that it didn't apply to promoted, people who are being promoted. It would just be brand-new appointments, like new hires, never worked for the town before.
Yeah.
So do you, what do, how did you wanna change it? What would you like it to, do you want me to get rid of the?
Just take out promoted, just put newly hired employees.
Promoted, okay.
Any other edits, John?
On the last page, or well, the last page, under Town Administrator, where it said, "Town TA attended the Finance Committee meet shotfalls." I wasn't, kind of got gobbled there, I wasn't sure what we were referring to.
Yeah, I think that, I saw that, too. I, I think maybe that meet should be meeting, and then we should insert words to discuss. So the sentence reads, "TA attended the Finance Committee meeting to discuss shortfalls."
Yeah, that sounds good, Mark.
I think I thought it was the focus.
Yeah, you got that, Bree?
Yeah.
So you're inserting meeting or ing to discuss?
Yeah.
All right.
Probably backface.
Anyone have anything else?
I think that was it for me.
I'm gonna make a motion the meeting, the minutes be approved as amended.
I'll second.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo, Mrs. Joy?
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, we are down to raves.
So I have a rave. As you know, because of COVID, we had, the Highway Department was almost all quarantined. And Steve Sorrow stepped up and did the honors at the transfer station. And there was a lot of chatter going on about it in town prior to that. And I think he, he did a great job, as usual. So my kudos to Steve, I think he's, he's really done well.
Good man. So my rave is for the projects and priority list. It's big, it's a challenge to go through it every two months, but it really is what we're about and what we're working on, and the opportunity not to lose anything along the way. And it's kind of the very essence of what we're working on. Though it's a lot of work, like, this job is a lot of work, appreciate that, I appreciate that list.
I don't have a rave. Mine is, no, mine is more of a rant, and.
it's just that I'm just so troubled by the deep divide in our country and I feel like we're at a crossroads. And while I don't condone the violence at our nation's capital or in the cities and towns throughout the US, I recognize the pain of Americans who've struggled through this past year with racial injustice and the pandemic, which has just exasperated the situation. And, you know, people that have lost their homes, their jobs, their businesses, family members and, and friends and who are frustrated by government. For me, Wednesday and the summer protests have really served as a wake-up call. And the need for us to stop talking at one another and start talking to one another. Instead of pushing further apart, we should be working to find common ground. This will only be accomplished through freedom of speech, the sharing of ideas and spirited debate through open dialogue, talking and listening with tolerance and compassion. While we're all Americans and as such are capable of working together to make our union stronger than before, we need to stop the rhetoric and name-calling, stop the vilifying of those that don't agree with us. Start seeing each other as individuals, as fellow Americans, not defined by our political ideals. It is the diversity of our people and ideals that give us strength. Through true collaboration, we can rise above this and work together to rebuild our United States of America.
Amen, amen.
Yeah, well done.
Any last words? We've made it through another meeting. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right, good night.
Aye.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Sarah, for being with us through the whole meeting.
Thank you.
Laura, thanks for having me.